Good evening and welcome to the Garfield High City School District Special Board Meeting and Work Session. Today is Monday, September 12, 2022. I call tonight's meeting to order. Mr. Saluka, can we have roll call please?
Yes, Ms. King.
Here.
Mr. Jubey. Ms. Morrison.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mrs. Daniels.
Here.
Can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Second.
Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Thomas and second by Ms. King. Can I have roll call please?
Ms. Thomas.
Yeah.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels.
Yes. At this time, can I have a motion to enter into executive session as of 6:02 PM for the purposes of... to discuss negotiations?
So moved. Second.
That was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Mr. Saluka, can I have roll call please?
Yes, Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yeah.
Mrs. Daniels.
Yes. We are entering into executive session as of 6:02 PM for the purposes of discussing negotiations.
Mr. Saluka, can you allow the minutes to show that we adjourned executive session at 6:50 AM?
Yes, again, thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of item 3.1. Can I have a motion? Rap checker here, please, that. I'm sorry. No problem. The next item we have on our agenda this evening is the approval of the superintendent recommendations for administrative staff, which is item 3.1. So moved. Is there any discussion relative to this item? Dr. Reynolds, would you like to share anything about the candidate that is being recommended for the board to approve this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Milton comes to us with a plethora of experience in public education, including special education, an area that I feel that is an area that we need to ensure that we are paying close attention to to serve some of our most vulnerable students. She will do an excellent job over at the middle school and so far we've heard nothing but good things from the staff there. We're looking forward to her doing some great things.
Thank you. Is there any questions or any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Thomas. Can I roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. The next item on the agenda this evening is 4.1, is superintendent recommendations for classified personnel. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. That's him.
And is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. Thomas. Can I have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. The next item on our agenda this evening is superintendent recommendations and that is the approval of the OC tentative agreement.
So moved. That's him.
And is there any discussion on this item at all? If there's no discussion, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Thomas. Mr. Saluka, can I have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. That ends the portion of our meeting with action items and we're going to move to the board's work session discussion items at this time. And the first item that we have on the agenda is the tentative agenda review. At this time, we will discuss the items that are on our Monday, September 19 regular board meeting agenda and this is the time that you can ask any questions that you have relative to the items on this agenda. Superintendent Reynolds or Mr. Saluka or anyone, do you guys have anything you would like to highlight to the board relative to the items that you placed on the tentative agenda for September 19?
Just a presentation coming up from the athletic department around budgets. Anything additional?
No, that was it. I have just the one item is the appropriation budget measure has to be approved by September 30 so that'll also be on the regular agenda for approval and we'll also be reviewing that in the finance committee meeting.
Okay. I do see that we have some recommendations for curriculum in item number 18. Are these new programs to the district or are we renewing foundations and writing A to Z? Could you show us a little bit about those?
Yeah, so they're both new to the district. We used to use foundations. We got away from foundations. We've been using a program called Really Great Reading for our phonics instruction. There's a lot of levels to it and the foundations program, I think, meets our needs a little bit better. It also has a handwriting component, which we need to start incorporating across all the grade levels so that can work in conjunction with the phonics instruction. We also have several people who are trained in Wilson so they can teach the foundations so it will help us in terms of professional development. So we're going to move towards that program and phase out the Really Great Reading over the course of the year and then phase this one in, beginning with kindergarten. The Writing A to Z is just another component to the Traz Kids suite where we're using Reading A to Z. They have several like little components and we've just been purchasing the Reading A to Z for right now and now we're going to start using the Writing A to Z. We like it because it's structured, it's already leveled and everybody knows how to use it. The program's fairly easy to use, it's very familiar and it's very similar to the reading so it's all housed in one little suite, which makes it nice for teachers and for students.
And with these, do we do any kind of like piloting of these programs or like what was the selection process of this particular curriculum?
So the foundations, we've used it before. Some people love it and some people don't because of the philosophy behind the teaching of it. Some people find that it's a little bit elementary when you start to get up into the third, fourth grade who still might need some phonics instruction. So we can modify it a bit to meet the needs of our learners. Ultimately, we're hoping that we can knock all that out in those foundational years and then we don't need to use it, I guess, often in fourth, fifth grade. So we are going back to that. Again, with the foundations, we like it that it's a package with the handwriting, with the phonics. It's all right there, we're familiar with it and again, we're looking for ease for student access, parent access and teacher access.
And when we get into like the fourth and fifth grade years, do we have another program that we will be utilizing to kind of provide that rigor because we are trying to move our students?
Well, we're hoping that we don't need to incorporate it quite as much. It's not part of the core instruction for the fifth grade. It's just that the, you know, tier two, tier three for kids who need it as they continue on, but the program itself is leveled.
It's more of a supplemental item that we're using to help our fourth and fifth grades if necessary?
Yeah, and it can go all the way up to eighth grade for kids in tier two or three who need it. Absolutely.
Thank you, Leanne.
Sure. Ma'am, sure. Yes, I have a question and this might be a Sean question. With the approval of the fall supplements, especially, I can't speak to soccer. I don't know if soccer just started and I know we're having a hard time recruiting athletes for soccer. But for our football coaches, is it possible to get their approvals on prior to or what was the holdup? Because we're, you know, a couple of things.
Yeah, there's a couple of reasons. One, we had coaches that chose not to come back this year and so the athletic department had to recruit coaches to outside, that were normally teaching positions, recruit outside staff or outside people to come coach for our kids this year. So that's why there's delay in getting some of these approved or put on this meeting in September because we were filling positions as the programs started up and running. And so I've spoken to the athletic department and we are making sure that our winter and our sprint coaches will be up and running so that we don't have this issue going forward.
Thank you. Dr. Reynolds, I do have a question for you. In your weekly report to the board, you have advised us of the new SRO being onboarded into the district. So I was wondering if there was any changes to our current MOU and if that is something that the board would need to approve and will it be on this agenda?
Yes, we're working to ensure that it is on the agenda. We wanted to place it in front of the police department prior to, we had to go through Eric as well. Just to make sure those things that we put into place, there were some minimal changes but we wanted to ensure that everyone was on board, there were no questions and it is currently in the hands of the police chief just to ensure that there are no questions moving forward. There were some adjustments we needed to make from what we learned from our experience of past and we wanted to just ensure that those things were addressed as well and I think that moving forward, we will be in a much better place.
So are we, have a goal for it to be on Septembers or?
Our goal is to have it up and ready to go.
Okay. Is there any more questions regarding the tentative agenda review? Ms. Thomas, did you have any questions? Ms. Morrison?
No.
Ms. King, did you have any more questions?
No.
Thank you. Thank you guys for your input relative to the tentative agenda. The next item on the agenda is the Board of Education Training Update. And, um, did anyone else attend any trainings over the session? I think between, did we go to our, did we do the superintendent retreat over this period? Or we didn't report on it? Well, we did do a superintendent board retreat in August. Yes, in August. And at that time, um, we had the opportunity to, um, just the relationship building between the Board of Education and the new superintendent. That was facilitated by Finding Leaders, um, which is the contracted, um, company that assisted us with, identifying candidates for the superintendency. And so now that we've hired our candidate, Finding Leaders is now supporting the Board of Education with ensuring that we, um, become on the same page and onboard our superintendent. Um, and build the relationship between the board and superintendent, which is a vital relationship for successful school districts. Um, so was there anything that stood out for anybody that they would want to report on that? I'm just excited to have you onboard as a superintendent and, um, that first, um, retreat that we had the opportunity to have with you, um, really solidified for me as a board member that I'm looking forward to continue to build with you and move the students of our district forward.
Thank you.
And ma'am chair, where were we supposed to have a part two? Because we couldn't do all of what we, um, wanted to do at that session. Do we have that, any tentative dates for that? I sent the email out to everyone, so I did speak with Russ, um, the facilitator, actually on Wednesday. But I was out of town, wasn't able to address it because we needed to deal with, um, the availability of one of our board members and if it was ideal for us to move forward and that one of our board members' availability is not able to be confirmed. And so Russ recommended that, um, some of the boardmanship stuff, we could still, um, table and to work together as a full board. But some of the goal setting and some other things that we were working on in those sessions, we do most definitely need to move forward and we would like to move forward sooner than later. Um, I know that everyone seemed to not have much availability on Saturdays. We talked about, you know, moving forward with Saturdays, but if, it's, it's critical and vital that we start to move forward. So even if we need to consider some evening meetings, we need to, um, solidify that soon to get before Russ with the superintendent again this month. So, um, I can, I'll send out some emails tomorrow. I'll find out with Russ if there's some evening dates available. Cause I don't think anyone has Saturday available for this month.
It depended on this Saturday, but it's like.
Yeah, I think you just said the third.
Yeah.
And we passed the third. Yeah, weekday.
Yeah. I can't believe this like.
I know.
The weekend of the seventeen.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, why? If everybody had their calendars available, we can look at some recommendations, at least some days of the week that I can present to him.
I can be available Saturday, the twenty-fourth though. I know it's kind of slow. I'm available after about two, after class until two o'clock.
I can do it after noon. A later.
I can do the twenty-fourth.
Okay. What would be a good time, Dr. Reynolds, the twenty-fourth? Your class is over at two, what is, what would be best for you? Three o'clock?
Two thirty.
Two thirty?
Because in this particular class, when we're done, we're done. So sometimes it's a little bit early here. She doesn't hold us, so.
Dr. Reynolds, are you able to text Russ now and ask him if the twenty-fourth at two thirty is good for him? And then while he's confirming that, so right now we have the twenty-fourth as a Saturday on hold. At two thirty, we're gonna see if Russ is available. And then after we find out that availability, um, and, and ask him if he's not, if there's, what weekdays is he available in the evenings? And while we wait for that, um, any other things that stood out or any other things relative to that, um, training that we attended?
Um, I would just like to add, I really enjoy, um, taking a look at our district's data. Um, seeing where we are and, you know, just outlining our goals to where we want to be.
If there's nothing else regarding that, um, I attended the, um, Consortium of State School Board Associations Urban Board Alliance Symposium. And I slid in there last bit because nobody was available. And I'm so glad I did. I can actually say, I don't wanna offend anybody else who have done any trainings, but I can actually say this probably was the best trainings that I've been to since being a board member. It was just really, the boards that were presenting were just high performing boards. And we're doing some great things for districts. So it's good to be on that national level. And we know what we, where we aspire to go with our students as a district. Having an opportunity to see districts that were in places that were more detrimental than we are as a district and actually meet our dreams and aspirations of student achievement is very encouraging. And one thing I appreciate as a board member, period, being in Ohio and any other training that I've attended, I appreciated even Ms. King, who she sits on the meetings with the presidents and the vice presidents that, how board members are, are, um, they share best practices with one another. And they mentor one another because no matter what district you sit in, no matter what state, what city, it tends, it's my belief that boards of, um, education members want to see what's best for Austin and it's no matter where. So it's, it was some good stuff. I sent you guys, uh, um, share, um, file with all the PowerPoints that were presented and just a little small write-up of exactly what, um, I attended. I just wanted to hit a few points. And when we go to these trainings, what I would like to see is eventually where we find the things that we think that we should be doing as a district and begin to plan on how we could possibly apply. Um, versus just wanting to get information, but really want to move on to vital information because I want Garfield High City School District to be able to present one day on how we moved our students from here to here. So one of the, um, trainings that I went to was Governance Team Actions That Lead to Student Achievement. And that was presented by Herring County Board of Education. And we talked a little bit about this with Russ, so it kind of tied in. And they really focused a lot of their work on their core beliefs in the Board of Education, really developing those core beliefs and driving their strategic plan. Um, all the work of their district based upon their core beliefs. And one thing that stood out about this, um, training that they said that really kind of, um, I think we need to make sure that we stay reflective on as a board. And they said, high, high performing schools have high performing governance teams. And the accountability of where we are as a district lies on how we perform our performance as a governance team. And so just making it sure that we have the tools that we need to be that high performing governance team because our desire is to have a high performing school district and see all of our students to see. And so I gave you guys, you know, all the things and just really also in this training, a high performing governance team is all about how we set goals for our superintendent, how we evaluate those goals and that really will push the work and the achievement of the school district. And so it was a lot of other things, but one, my biggest takeaway for us as a Board of Education as it relates to this training is really taking a look at currently what the district core beliefs are. Um, making sure that it drives us having a clear goal of where we want our district to go. In this district, they were not just saying, we want our students to achieve. They actually was looking at the data where they were at now and saying, hey, we want to see, this is at sixty-six percent. And by, in two years, we need to see this moved up to seventy-five percent in achievement. And they were dead on specific. And that district was able to actually exceed, exceed those goals just based upon the core beliefs and how the Board of Education was governing and evaluating the superintendent and moving clear and precise goals and based upon the core beliefs of the district was how they was able to move their district forward. And this district didn't even have a, they didn't even have a huge deficit during COVID. They didn't meet their goals of moving forward, but they didn't fall back. And so that was phenomenal.
You said that was Herring County?
Yes. And also I couldn't figure out how to do it, you guys, but I'm gonna sit down and have the kids help me do it. So I did audio record the sessions I attended, so you guys can have the audio to go back. I just couldn't figure out how to put it on the Google Drive, cause y'all know me making that phone was a big deal. If I could give me a hand. Google is not my thing, so I got the documents out there, but I couldn't figure out how to get the audio. Um, the other one I went to was expanding mental health services for both students and staff with the creation of a wellness program. And this district, they, and I think we had talked about this in the training I did before, where they actually had their own counselors and their own, instead of having agencies, they were able to get grants and funding to, um, have their own staff members that were counselors and therapists and doing that TBT work, uh, within the district to provide continuity and culture within the district. And one good thing, they paired and looking at where the students were at and supporting the students, they actually did A scores on the students and the parents. And paired it to see really how to support the student. So that was really like looking at the whole child, like you never really heard of, you know, so yeah, we have our students A's, A score. But they went a little further and grasped the A score of the student. And then they also shared with them having their own staff members that is doing the work. Um, getting the data and the results of the therapeutic sessions was a lot easier because it was their staff. It was their, they didn't have to go through an agency, not sharing HIPAA. It, it became the district's HIPAA, um, data. And so it was help, it helped them support that, but that was really good. And then what they end up, when they first started this, they repurposed their staff. So they kind of, they had school social workers, they had counselors, they had psychologists, but they were doing everything that was supporting the students and doing the IEP piece. They separated them and they used some that just supported the student's social emotional wellbeing. And then they had, uh, special ed. So this team did evaluations only and then this team was called the Impact Team. And so they focused on students wellness only. And this, this, this group focused on the evaluation and special education piece. And that way, they said it supported the staff and being able to build those relationships with the student, with the mental health components and support them better when they didn't have to cross over in between seeing a student about an issue and now I gotta go over and do, uh, evaluation. So I thought that was a good tip. And there's a lot of other great things that they did. How they supported the staff, so that was a big thing, was the staff support. They brought EAP to the school. And they were able to use, they were able to use their lunch period and stuff like that to access EAP. And if a teacher was really in a crisis, they were, they were giving them an opportunity to go see who they needed to see, that E, EAP support during planning time if they were having a crisis. So they prioritized that. So that was a really, so they said that was convenience and gave teachers access to the services that they needed where they didn't have to worry about going after work, that the services came to the building for the teachers. The district had a talk line, um, and the talk line was ran by maybe, I think maybe a human service department, they had a relationship with human service department. Teachers, parents, and students was able to call this talk line. And it was to support them with any mental health, um, stressors and things like that. And that was a universal talk line that was utilized throughout the district. And this district had posters everywhere throughout the district with QR codes. And it had little tips about if you're feeling depressed or if you're feeling suicidal, where the students can just go up and pop the code. Or that talk line, I think the talk line had a text component too. Where the student can just go up, hit the QR code and text that they're not having a, you know, that they need some support. And they was able to, the students were able to self-refer. Yeah, so that was some really good things. So their data showed that when they began to put those supports into the school district, referrals began to decrease, achievement began to increase, and building culture began to shift. And their counselors and therapists were twelve month positions. Because the work doesn't stop on breaks. And they said they found that they got quite a bit more calls over the breaks than, you know, normal. And they was twenty-fourth, like they were able to go out and dispatch people. So I'm, when I figured out how to record that, that is one that you guys are gonna be interested in. And the district held regular meetings with human services and justice services to discuss solutions to issues the district was seeing and the community was seeing. So they almost had a consortium with outside the community. And then the other one that I attended was the Board's Role in Shattering Inequalities. Um, and that presenter was actually Georgia's Superintendent of the Year. And she actually was the finalist for the Superintendent of the Year. And, um, they really talked about, um, this district just was creative. They had like a forty-four million dollar budget and I, I, I'm gonna let this district go cause I need to see how they did all of this, but they redistrict their schools due to inequity. So they removed K five and did more smaller steps. They created a Montessori school within the district. Yes, like they piloted, I think with K one. And this was all done with, and she, she made it very clear in this training, when you're dealing with inequities in education, you really have to go after some money. Funding can be an issue and is an issue, but you have to be creative and you have to really go after. But you have to be creative and you have to really go after other, other areas of funding and just be creative with what you have. So she, she made sure, she said that a million times in her presentation. And their district really focused on going after grants and being competitive in the grant sector outside of things that normal, um, school districts would seek. Um, she really talked about data, utilizing equity and data. They even brought in, um, dance as a class starting in elementary, just for some physical, um, um, like gym type of activities. They were just very unique. They brought band into the elementary school as actually a class, um, to coincide with like music. Um, she talked about what they call the invisible backpack that the kids bring to school every day. And in those backpacks, that's where the kid holds hunger, the eviction notice they have at home, um, abuse and things like that, and how it's important for the districts to be able to unpack those invisible backpacks that they bring to school every day and really support the students. And this is the district that really moved their district with their scores, because one of the, and shattering inequities is that test scores should not predict poverty. Um, and equity work is complex, but possible. Um, and they really drove in, really using your data to move your district forward. Um, just a few things that the district did to support, they did, they got a B-well clinic where they provided telehealth to sick children, um, so that they can be treated by a doctor on site. And then they can return to the class. So they had a B-well clinic with telehealth, so the parents didn't have to leave work. They can participate. They had a pharmacy. So they, they were even able to fill their scripts. Um, they partnered with a local church and created these things called blessing bags. And the local church donated bags of food to children to take home on the weekends. This school district had an after-school and dinner program. So students, this is how they were able to get students to participate in their after-school programming was by providing them dinner, and they did have to get a special grant to run that. And she talked about the inequities of giving kids projects and how their district, if the kid has science projects or any projects where they needed materials outside of what's provided, that they provided those materials to the students so that all students had equal access and opportunity to participate in project-based assignments. And so those were some little things that I learned. I sent you guys all the slides. It was just a two-day, or, so it wasn't a lot of room to get a lot of stuff in, because they did a lot of more. It was a symposium, so a lot of it was more group speakers. Because this is the first time for this group, we're just trying to get everybody excited about, um, the group, our own, um, a local, an Ohio board member was appointed to co-chair of the, um, Urban School Board Alliance. And that was, um, Warrensville Heights, um, board member Ray Freeman. And then their president, um, was Erica Williams. She was, um, appointed um, from Atlanta, Georgia over this Urban School Board Alliance. So that is all I have for you guys. With that, it was a great, I mean, it was short, but it was some very, I mean, they were just head-on with their, um, presentations and the selection of information that they had at that, at that symposium. So that is all I have on that. Is there any questions? If there's not any questions, and as I said, you guys have everything in the, um, Google Drive. And I'm going to get you guys the audio, because I really think it will benefit everybody if they ever actually hear the presentations. Is there any other matters for discussion?
Really quickly, no, Russ is available.
Oh, great, so.
And also not be invited there. Attend.
Okay, great. And I'll, if we can get a meeting notice for September twenty-four
Yep.
at two thirty.
Location?
ESC. Any other matters for discussion? If there's no other matters for discussion, can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Mr. Soluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Thomas. Can I vote for, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Tonight's meeting is adjourned as of seven thirty, six P M. Meeting adjourned.
I do have a, a quick request.